All right, we are going to call this meeting by order at 7:02. Please rise for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Bill Lopez.
Here.
Laura Madigan.
Here.
Kelly Karaman.
Here.
James Burge.
Here.
Don Kraft is absent. We have a quorum and can move on to approval of minutes from November twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions or concerns for Corinne? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The minutes are approved. Next, we can move on to considerations of claims and sewer adjustments. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Corinne?
Excuse me. Thank you.
All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay, those are approved as well. Next, we have petitions and comments from the floor. If anyone has come to address the council on anything, now is the time to approach the podium. State your name and address and give us your comment. Seeing no one approach, we will move on to reports. Clerk Treasurer.
Okay, so first just a reminder that the board and commission application period is still open. That will close at noon on December twenty-second, so you can go to our website, townofporter.in.gov to apply. The application, along with the list of open seats, is found under News and Events. It's also found if you go to the navigation bar and select Government and then Boards and Commissions. I know there are a couple people that couldn't find it on the website, so you can also search for it and it'll pop up. Also happy to report that our fall tax distributions were received today. They came in a little bit earlier than expected. I also am seeking council approval for two additional claims that came in after the packet was sent out on Friday. One is to Mission Communications for $6,044. And the second is for Bresji Nelson &amp; James for $5,062.50, being that it's already December ninth and we're trying to close up the end of the year as things come in. That's why I'd like to get approval for those two this evening.
Thank you. I believe you distributed those already. Everyone has had an opportunity to review those two claims. Do we have a motion to approve those two claims?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further questions or concerns? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay, those claims are approved.
Okay, and then lastly, my public official bond arrived in the mail. I need council approval for that. It's the same that it's been in years past. It's $300,000. There's statutory requirements on that. And again, just looking for council approval. I have it here if anybody would like to review it, but it's the same surety bond that is required by statute to have.
Do we have a motion to approve our clerk treasurer's surety bond?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any more questions for Corinne? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, that's it. That's it. Thank you, ma'am. Attorney.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Police Department.
I've got two requests. The first is request to declare surplus property. These are four outdated old tasers. I attached a letterhead with the packet that went out on Friday. It included the serial numbers for those. So I'm requesting council approval to label those as surplus property.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve declaring four Taser X-26P units as surplus property?
I like that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Does anybody have questions for the chief?
How do you dispose of them, Dan?
These, in particular, this was actually set up by Officer Reynolds, who's taking over for me as Taser instructor. There's an online form that's provided by Axon. Axon's the parent company of the Tasers. And there's an online form where other departments can reach out for assistance, whether it's training or supplies and whatnot. And it just so happens that San Bernardino Police Department in California is looking for X-26 Tasers. And they're gonna pay all the postage. There'll be no cost to the town at all, so.
So they get repurposed. That's good. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any, I guess, what would be the kind of street value for Tasers like that, just ballpark?
What we've done in the past is a trade-in value, and it's next to nothing. I want to say it was like $20 per Taser. And these are eighteen hundred, twenty-one hundred new, depending on the model. So especially this old, I mean, we're at a Taser seven now, so this is three or four generations old. These are some of the first Tasers that came out.
Three or four generations, but how many years would you say that they've been in service?
Ten years, ten-plus years. It's been a while. So to answer your question, not probably worth the work that it would take to sell them and go through that process.
Do we have any other questions for the chief? Should we amend the motion to include donating the units to San Bernardino's Police Department in California? Whose motion was that? Kelly's?
Yeah.
How do you feel about amending your motion to include donating the units to San Bernardino's?
I feel great.
Thank you.
I'll amend that. And your second?
I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you. Good, good cause.
Any further questions for the chief? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay.
Second, well, first of all, thank you for that. Second request is a little bit more robust than that. It's reference of purchasing two vehicles for next year for 2026. In the packet also on Friday should have been some updated or amended request details. If the council so chooses to go along with the street department's suggestion of... They would basically take the 2023 Durango and repurpose that and utilize it over there, in which case I would request the additional $25,000, which is the trade-in value from Graf Ford, from CCD, bringing the total to one thirty, $130,431.85. And that does include top-to-bottom turnkey, upfitting and everything. I would like to reiterate in the past where some shortfalls have come into play is when not everything was included in the upfitting bill. And then we're trying to pick up the slack and buy parts and equipment later, so. That is my request. I'm seeking council approval to move forward with purchasing of the two vehicles. How you would like to go about that, whether we just trade both into Graf or... My suggestion, I'm with Superintendent Spanier over there. Almost called him chief.
It's hard, right?
It is. It is. So if he would like to elaborate more on it, this is his great challenge.
Like I said, when we asked, showed interest in it with not getting the battery trucks, we're gonna need another truck. And the use that we needed for is just a daily driver for somebody that goes around and checks and runs tests and stuff. And we keep the crane truck parked so we can make it last way longer than if he drove it around every day. It didn't seem to make sense. And with us being able to get that for less than the price of a pickup truck and told the police department that we'd be willing to, you know, pay for it if need be, but it would suit our purpose and be cheaper than going out and getting a brand-new vehicle for a daily driver that doesn't have to be heavy-duty, doesn't have to be, you know, any... Just getting somebody from point A to point B.
How does the council want to start? Does someone want to start by making a motion, and then if that motion gets a second, we debate during that part? Or do we want to have an open conversation first before motioning anything? How are you guys feeling?
We can have an open conversation.
Do you want to start it?
As far as the street department getting the 2023 grade Durango, I think it's a great idea. I think that's exactly where it should go. And it will save the street department money as well. And help the town. That was one of our conversations as the council, is we didn't want to trade it in. Low year, low miles. We're doing what we...
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that that car is more valuable to us being used for the next however many years it has left than the $25,000 we could get for it and trade in. I agree with that strongly. I would like to see the police department keep it because we paid to outfit it for the police department. But if our police chief says that that's just not possible, then I would rather see our public works department put it to use, and good use, daily until the end of its life. I do not see the... From our perspective, I don't see CCD paying CCD that money for the car that stays in the town of Porter. As far as ordering, obviously Graf Ford is offering better prices than Curry Ford. Everybody sees that. That's a big difference between those two numbers. Okay. And $105 for two vehicles plus upfitting, if that's what the council chooses to approve, still falls within the budgeted request through CCD for those vehicles. So transferring an additional $25,000 over doesn't seem necessary. If you think there's something I'm missing, chief, and you want to convince me, I'll listen, but I just don't see the purpose of transferring $25,000 to have him buy a vehicle from you when the money all comes in and out of one office.
Yeah, I don't have a huge sales pitch. I kind of share the same view. I know that the superintendent was willing to pay it out of his budget.
You're not gonna say no.
And I'm not gonna say no to that. But I agree with you. I understand that it's kind of all the town's money and it would end up staying there anyway, so. I'm fine with, you know, whichever approach the council takes with that, as long as we can get these vehicles and get them outfitted, so.
How does the council want to move forward at this point?
I agree with you on the $25,000. It all comes out of the same cave. You should just keep it there instead of moving the $25 back and forth. I agree with that. As far as any other vehicles, still we're dealing with, you know, again, really low mileage. The average for state of Indiana is 100,000 miles when cars get swapped out for municipal police departments. The information I've seen, there are some that get extreme use, you know, as low as 90, even 85,000, but these are substantially below that, more than half below that. Given, you know, things we talked about last council meeting, you know, with our financial situation still gonna be a little precarious, we're not exactly sure how much money we're gonna have. We know that we're getting less and less money this year, '27 and '28. Whatever we can do to slow those expenditures, I think, puts us in a better position and more flexibility. Given that they still have very low mileage, I think it'd be better just financially for us just to forego doing that this year, at least until we find out, you know, get a positive report back from Corinne. Once we know where everything for this coming year, where we sit. And then maybe pick the topic back up again later next year. So that's my thoughts on it.
So your vote is for maintaining the status quo, just pausing, living with the fleet that we have now, not buying any new cars right now?
No new cars at the moment, yes, until we get a better footing for our overall financial situation with the severe cuts that are coming from the state legislature. This year, next year, and the following year.
Yep.
So I do have a mind just on the mileage. I know that running vehicles, highway miles, whether it's state police or county police, is very different than local town roads, right? Highway miles versus town, city are very different. The use and abuse on vehicles is different. How they idle, how fast they run them, or, you know. So I'm not a professional. I don't know. But I... Is there a difference between, and I'm just gonna ask you as a former chief, like, highway miles in town versus...
Highway miles, like the state police, they run their vehicles well, well over 100,000. But, you know, almost all their miles are highway. County has substantially more highway miles than us. And municipalities generally, you know, their miles are, you know, at slower speeds and, you know... Yeah, there's a difference on how the cars... But it goes all the way from us, you know, local, all the way to state police because the state police would have a heart attack if they were trading something, you know, for 100,000. But, you know, all their miles are highway, so there's... Us and them are the biggest difference. County's somewhere in the middle.
In the middle.
Yeah.
The stats that I've got were specific to municipal, meaning town and city cars versus... Because they had a whole nother set of stats for state police.
How do you feel?
Me? I am a fan of compromise. I hear everything that Jim says, and I can't disagree with where he's coming from. However, I also recognize that the town of Porter has big city problems on a small-town budget, right? Because of where we are geographically, because we've got the interstate, the beach, our challenges, and, you know, two giant parks and tourism, right? So our, the jobs that our employees have to do are more aligned with, especially our police chases, are more aligned with a bigger city than they are a small, you know, rural community. Two years ago, we had this conversation and decided instead of the three-two replacement for our police fleet, we would go two-two. And so last year, we got two, I believe, instead of three. We also are about to pass a salary ordinance that solidifies the chief's plan to reorganize his department with a full-time staff of nine law enforcement officers instead of 10. I say that that seems like an opportunity for another compromise with the cars. And instead of two-two, two-one, we reduce one car purchase for each year, right? Rather than alternating the way that we work. I can... I recognize the need to keep a fresh fleet, but I don't think that we can afford to keep the freshest fleet. So I would say, like I said, I'm a fan of compromise. I would say, yeah, buy one vehicle instead of two. Your turn.
So if we buy one instead of two, then what are we doing? We're trading one in and keeping one?
Keeping one for the public works.
And trading one in.
We can't do that if you're getting rid of two cars and only replacing one, then.
That would be downsizing the fleet by exactly one vehicle.
Oh, I see you're down.
That would be downsizing the entire fleet by one vehicle.
Unless there was a way that we were going to downsize our pool car amount and trade another one in, then I would be down for two. You see what I'm saying? If one of the vehicles, because we're getting two new ones, right? Or we're getting one new one, and trading it in, but if they were to downsize their pool car instead of having three and traded one in, I don't know how it would work. Or maybe the compromise is just one. And trading one in. And calling it that.
Because there's... I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I don't love that we spent money to outfit a vehicle that we are ditching only two years later. That's a hard pill to swallow. The only way that I think that we can make that okay is by keeping that vehicle in town and in service and being a little bit more conservative with future purchases.
I think, you know, I mean, one thing, there's been issues with the Dodge products.
There have been. I'm so glad that we're moving away from the Durangos. I respect...
But we're not getting rid of it, so we're still gonna be...
The town will have it.
Yeah.
Well, right, but that problem is a manu... That was a warranted, I think.
Hopefully it doesn't come back, right?
I think it's just the downtime on having those Durangos in the shop, even though those repairs were warranted, was a pain in this chief and previous chief's neck enough to move on from those for sure. Would someone like to make a motion so that we can move on?
I'll make a motion.
What are you gonna motion for, Kelly?
To purchase one new vehicle with trading into 2021.
2021. The Graf Ford quotes. So motion to trade in vehicle number two, the 2021 Dodge.
With 54,000 miles.
With 54,000 miles for 16,000.
16,000.
And then approval for the Graf Ford purchase for one 2026 model Ford Explorer plus the upfitting through...
Bartronics.
Bartronics. Bartronics?
Yes.
Okay.
What amount for the upfitting? Were those two different amounts, depending on which vehicle?
Yeah.
Was like 16 or 13 or something?
Yeah.
Prisoner transport system?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I will have to opt to consult with my fleet officer on that to depend on who's gonna get that vehicle then.
Okay.
If we, I mean, if possible, if it needs an answer right now, we can just go with the higher amount and then always come back down, but I don't know.
Not to exceed in case you want to have that one outfitted with the prisoner transport system cage or cage. Gotcha. Yeah.
I'm comfortable operating under the assumption that if we're only buying one of these two vehicles, we will plan to equip the vehicle with the prisoner transport cage. And if your fleet manager decides that that's unnecessary, it'll be a not to exceed, so we won't include that part.
Okay. So that's the $19,906.04. Okay. Do you have more details on that motion, Corinne? Or did we cover it all?
I think you covered it all. I think anybody said the price of the vehicle, though. Trade-in was 16.
The purchases are $46,567.
That was Kelly's motion, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for my clarification, sorry to interrupt. The three-vehicle year and then the two-vehicle year, I don't know if the former, maybe the former chief spoke about that. I know that earlier this year, that was something that I spoke about, is going down to two every year. And then with this, you know, taking into account for SEA One, the two and one, that's not permanent from here on out. We're still gonna stick with the two every year, but just one for this specific, right?
I think that we have, I think that you're right in pointing out that there was not a clear determination that the new rule for Evermore is two and one. That's not what we just decided.
Okay.
It was just...
Gotcha. Yep.
Offering context for the conversation.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Um...
Was there a second?
Was there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Further debate or concerns?
I only have one question, Dan. Will the price stand, will the price be the same with buying one car opposed to buying two? You know, was it a package deal? Do you think that's gonna be an issue?
To my understanding, no. It wouldn't have changed the price of the vehicle. Because even with the trade-ins, I got kind of concerned if it did go to the street department. And I was told that it didn't affect it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
With the, yeah, with the, still, I'm at the same point. Low miles, I don't feel we should do any of this here, especially with the financial situation.
Okay, thank you. All right, if we're ready to take a vote, then, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, sure, sure. Corinne, would you mind?
No, I don't mind. Kelly Karaman.
Yes.
James Burge.
No.
Bill Lopez.
Yes.
Laura Madigan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have more, sir?
I did not. I am all done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Fire Department?
Our new medical bags were delivered last week. Everything finally came in, so we're in the process of putting those together. Hopefully we'll have them... Kind of a delicate process because we have to empty bags to put bags into service, but also have everybody trained on a bag before we put them on the truck, so we're working on those details. Hopefully we'll have them up and going very soon. The engine comes back from repairs tomorrow. Hopefully have that in service, back in service by the end of tomorrow night. And that is all I have.
Well, thank you, sir. Looking forward to getting that engine back in service.
Well, me too.
All right. Public Works?
I just got a couple things. Our leaf pickup was suspended because of the snow. We planned on coming back to it, but with the weather, I think we're gonna have to pick up in the spring. It's not gonna get better anytime soon. But that being said, the weather tonight said if we get the snowfall predicted in the next day, that we will already have more snow than we had all last year.
Wow. So we're supposed to get more snow tonight?
I think tomorrow, tomorrow morning or something.
Rain and snow.
But, so, different. Last time I asked to get some quotes on concrete for sidewalks.
Yes, you did.
Sidewalk repairs. We got three quotes back, or two quotes back out of the three. Hometown Concrete was cheaper just by a little bit. There'd be a new contractor we haven't used before, but the business is, Hometown is Porter. They'll have to get their licensing and everything together before they do it. But this is a spring project because they're already done for the year. We just encumber those funds at the end of the year. We're not asking for any more funds. We're just trying to spend money we got for a big problem we have in town, so. Want to get that out there. But I asked that you guys accept the quote from Hometown Concrete for $22,463.74.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to accept the quote from Hometown Concrete.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further questions for Jamie? All in favor of approval, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. We look forward to seeing that in the spring.
Thank you very much. And the only other thing I have is we're still kind of in a holding pattern on our overhead door. We, the cheapest steel door, we did get that, but everybody else put in a quote for... But everybody else put in a quote for stainless steel doors. And we got one that is uh fairly close to our cheapest uh steel door. But this place with the cheapest steel door did not give us a quote for stainless steel because they thought it would be so expensive. So I asked them to give us one, and as soon as they give us that one, uh we'll uh we'll bring it to the next meeting and see what you guys decide. I mean, there is quite a bit of difference between the two. But if we get a stainless door, we know that that's gonna be a permanent solution and we won't have to worry about, you know, replacing parts of the door every three or four years. That door's four years old. So, and it.
Rusted.
Rusted all the way through. But just an update on that, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. Parks?
Uh I only have one thing to report, and that is that I went out with the sign contractor last week and marked all the spots for new signage. So uh those are getting locates, and those are signs for all parks, town hall, municipal and buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And that's being funded through the redevelopment commission, so. Those those have been marked and we're just awaiting installation. Um and then nothing else to report, but I would like to say thank you to the public works department and their mechanic. Uh we've had two or three pieces of machinery go down, uh including the park truck and brought it in. And that mechanic is a a magic man. So we really appreciate his help.
Thank you so much. All right, building commissioner, director of development?
Uh one uh one item, twenty-nine contractors for approval that have met all the requirements, paid all the fees.
Do we have a motion to approve the twenty-nine contractors that have uh met all the requirements and paid all of their fees?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Mike?
Like are the um lift stations, are they um, is that complete?
They're all done. Um we're going over some final stuff.
I thought.
I don't know if they got all the stone down.
I'm sorry. Let's pause on that.
Yeah, I'm.
I meant, yeah, about the contractors. Contractors in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay.
All right, those contractors are approved. Please continue with your questions, sir. You're good.
Um yeah, Mike, so that was my questions.
I have to check. I don't think they got the stone all done, dude, because it froze and snowed on it. So we we haven't paid them everything because of the stone. That's the only thing left to do is put the gravel down.
The generators, everything's in our, everything's.
Everything's running. They owe us the operations manuals, and I told the guy to send them to us, and we haven't got them yet, but otherwise they're done, yeah. Uh I have, a few weeks ago, I asked about, we we talked about permit fees.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I have a proposed change for permit fees. I'll send that to everybody tomorrow.
Thank you.
I've been working on it. Chesterton's doing theirs.
Yeah, we saw.
Chesterton's is very complicated. I'm not for complicated. So I took what we had and modified it, and I'll send it out for comments tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no old business, so we can move on to new business. The first is ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash eleven, amending salary ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero eight. This is up for second read. We covered everything in it two weeks ago. Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bill. All right, do we have any uh comments, concerns, debate on that one?
This is just throwing the MS four position, right?
Excuse me? Yes, correct, correct. Yep, okay. All right, um Corinne, if you don't mind, please, can we have a roll call vote on this one?
Uh Kelly Karaman?
Yes.
James Burge?
Yes.
Phil Lopez?
Yes.
Laura Madigan?
Yes. All right, beautiful. Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twelve is a salary ordinance for year twenty-twenty-six. Um also up for second read. We debated it thoroughly two weeks ago. Um do we have a motion to approve twenty-twenty-five dash twelve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have further debate on this one? Okay. Corinne, can we have another roll call vote, please?
Kelly Karaman?
Yes.
James Burge?
No.
Phil Lopez?
Yes.
Laura Madigan?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, we've got resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen. This is transfer of appropriations within the twenty-twenty-five budget. Um everybody has a copy of that. Corinne, for the benefit of the public, I'll ask you to please give a brief description. If you don't mind, unless you want me to, because I caught you off guard. I'm really sorry.
That's all right. I was just writing. Um so any time an appropriation is overspent, um we can't leave it in the negative. So we gotta move money from somewhere else. Um this is, of course, within the same fund and or department. Uh it's just a resolution is required if it's moving money between one major budget classification to another. So um pretty common, end of the year. This will cover most of the end of the year transfers. Um there's still gonna be a couple more needed, but the next resolution uh will cover that.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Do we have a motion to approve li- resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or concerns for Corinne? Or debate? Okay, um can we have a roll call vote on that one, too? We're gonna do that for all the next two.
Kelly Karaman?
Yes.
James Burge?
Yes.
Phil Lopez?
Yes.
Laura Madigan?
Yes. Okay, thank you so much. That is now approved. And then twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen, year-end appropriations transfers within the twenty-twenty-five budget.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have any questions or concerns for Corinne about this one? Hearing none. Uh roll call vote, please, Corinne.
Kelly Karaman?
Yes.
James Burge?
Yes.
Phil Lopez?
Yes.
Laura Madigan?
Yes. Okay, thank you, thank you. Last up for new business is the regional development authority's transit development district steering committee appointment for twenty-twenty-six. Um our director of development, Michael Berry, has served the town of Porter on the steering committee uh for a few years now. We appreciate his service, and if he's willing to accept it, I would love to please appoint you back to the R D C. I'm sorry, the R D A, um transit development steering district committee for twenty-twenty-six. Michael Berry, thank you. I should have pointed out, I'm sorry, fellow council members, that I didn't make that a group discussion. That technically is a presidential appointment. I apologize for not telling you that ahead of time. Council comments?
I'd like to thank Public Works on the snow removal. The roads have looked great. It was done really quickly. And I know they've been super busy this year, so.
Can I piggyback on that and say thank you, but also sorry on behalf of North First Street? There were at least five of us that woke up Sunday morning, did not expect it to snow, left our cars out on the street. And I don't know who tried to come through the first time around, but they called. But we had popo come and ringing doorbells only ten minutes later. We're all out there trying to move our cars around. Uh thank you so much for giving us the twenty minutes that we needed to get everybody's cars in the neighborhood off the road so they could clear it up. And we really appreciate it. We're sorry. We won't get caught sleeping again.
Thank you.
The only other thing I had was um our sign committee. Just want to thank uh Brian and and Michael specifically for helping execute that. But also everybody that was on that committee uh that started almost two years ago now, which includes Kelly, um Rob Melinger, um Mike, Brian, and and myself. It it was a joy coming together. I think we all had a clear vision of what we want to do, something positive, helping with the branding of the town. Um thanking the the council for their support on the uh the overall project. And it's all come together, almost completed, so it's fun. Not all projects can go get done that quickly, and some don't ever get done, you know? So tackling one and and see it complete to its fruition is uh is rewarding. So thank you, guys, for all your efforts.
I'd also like to thank you. You guys worked really, really hard on that, and I appreciate it.
All right. Yes?
They look great.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Boom. Thank you all.
We would have no signs if it weren't for you two.
Yeah, yeah.
And they do look beautiful.